We are using the Attention to Attendance, which you approved at a previous board meeting. So this will actually was perfect timing that we approved that because chronic absenteeism is not something that we were able to measure and see how students were doing or how students were attending school. And now we have that measure, so I appreciate you approving that. And then other student outcomes would be our local benchmark data. School climate is our suspension and expulsion rates. And then parental involvement is pretty self-explanatory. Basic services, that's our facilities and that's our Williams review, making sure students have their textbooks. The teachers have the right credentialing. The facilities are safe and in good repair. And then the implementation of a Common Core. We need to make sure that we are fully implementing, which I know we've shared in the past. We are doing a lot of professional development for our staff. And we're actually, I'm hearing from colleagues in the county that we are pretty much ahead of the game with preparing for Common Core. So we are well underway for that.
Though we feel behind.
What?
Even though we feel behind.
Even though we feel behind, but when I talk to my colleagues. And then course access, making sure especially in the middle school that students are able to take that, those math courses and English language arts and English language development courses.
Ms. McCulley?
Yes.
On under school climate, the last bullet point, other local measures. Do you have any more details on what those are or?
It just, this is just, this is from the Legislative Analyst Office. And this was just if you have another measure that you can use. So they were keeping it open.
But those two student suspension and expulsion have to be included. Oh, I got you.
And then, so the timeline from the California Department of Education is if you look at the year 2013-14. So in January, the State Board of Education had to adopt regulations for how to have the funding. And then by the end of this month. And then by March 31st, that's when they're going to have the template ready. They have a draft right now, but we're not sure if that's going to stick or not. So we, we've been actually preparing with what we think is going to be and doing a lot of background gathering of information and comparing our LEA plan to what we think the template will be. But we don't want to share anything yet because it might change. And then by July 1st, we're going to need to have the board approve the L cap for the 14-15 school year. And so I'll show you in a future slide is how we're going to prepare for that. And then you can see that the County Office of Education is actually going to be the approving body, not this Department of Education, the California Department of Education. So it'll be more on the local level. So the local control, they'll be approving our plans. And then every year, we will have to by July 1st, update annual goals. And then every three years, we'll have to rewrite. And so how are we preparing? We already started planning, as I mentioned before. We've identified the current district superintendent LEA plan goals that we're already doing and the actions that match those eight priority areas. We're already doing a lot of these areas. So, you know, we've put it all together and said, okay, well, we've already accomplished or are working towards a lot of these priority areas. And then we do need to address a few areas. So we need to brainstorm some new actions that meet those priority areas. And in order to do that, we need to solicit input from all the stakeholders. So these are all acronyms. AC is our Administrative Council, so all the administrators in the district. ILT is Instructional Leadership Team. And I have it actually on the next slide as to who these are. PIAC is Parents. D-LAC is our District English Language Advisory. AFT is our Teachers Union. CSEA is our Classified Union. And SSC is School Site Council and et cetera, because there are more groups. So next steps, we have to wait to see what the CDE is going to approve as their final template. We need to begin drafting the L cap goals and actions based on the templates. So we kind of have to wait. But we are sharing this information with the different stakeholders, with you. I'm going to be meeting with the Teachers Union and the Classified Union on the 21st to talk about getting some ideas of what kind of areas based on those eight priorities, what goals and actions we want to see. And then making sure that we address those into the plan that we are formulating. And then to give you an idea of, there's lots of meetings that we're going to be having and have already had. So Administrative Council or AC, we've already started sharing some preliminary information in October. You can see the next couple of dates and that's, you can see who is comprised of all these committees. So all the acronyms that were on the previous page are spelled out on this page. And so you can see all the different dates that are coming up. And so in April, we plan to have a draft. And that will be for all the different groups to come together and review the draft and give their input. Then it will be revised. And then we'll have an evening meeting for the community as well on May 1st and hope to then have it brought to you in May for approval. And I believe that was it. So we are actually, as I said, this is all a work in progress. We have a district team tomorrow going to the county office to learn a little bit more as well about the workshop, about the L cap and the LCFF. It's a workshop for us. So more information to come. This is what I know so far. And is there any, are there any questions?
One of the things that ideally would be nice if we were designing a school district from scratch and can develop our goals and then our activities and fund those activities. We're pretty much doing that. I mean, we've gotten to a funding level so low that we're down to the bare bones. But what we do have to figure out is how to take all of our current activities and translate them into this plan. So it's like putting words to our budget. And then with any additional funds, we would need to prioritize which activities get funded for the current year and then the following year, you know, if it continues to grow through 2021, which I really hope it does. But we've never had eight years of continual economic growth in California. And I don't think it will be fully funded before a recession hits and something else has to happen. So we have to be methodical and make sure that we can support new initiatives. And also as we expand, as the greatly depleted services that we have had to reduce the last couple of years, try to make sure that we, when we reinstate them, that something that could be sustained.
Were, oh, should I just? Were there any goals in the LEA plan that did not match the L cap priority areas or?
Well, the LEA plan actually was mostly focused on academics and parental involvement. So the student suspension and expulsion, having a specific goal for that. I mean, it was addressed within academics. But it wasn't a specific goal for it. And so that is one area that we want to make sure we have a specific goal, as well as the attendance. I mean, it was addressed in actions with the student performance, but it's not the specific, we need to improve attendance in the LEA plan. So it's kind of putting all these different goals that we've had like this. It's been a superintendent goal, you know, to have improved attendance, but it hasn't been in a all in one place. So this is kind of putting all of those together.
So all our different initiatives, putting them all in this one document, all right.
It's going to be a huge undertaking, but I'm hoping it will simplify things and have a very clear focus.
We hope it's less than a thousand pages.
Which leads me to my next and last question is, who's responsible for doing all of this menial work? Do you have a team or you? You're just inputting?
Well, no, I mean, I, obviously, I'm going to be working with all of the input. But I think to have, to putting it all together and piecing it and formatting, I will probably do all the grunt work. But, but I will definitely be needing input and support and bringing drafts back. But to have more than one person working on a draft would be difficult. So I think just getting the input and I'll be the one putting it together and then bringing it back.
All right, well, thanks for all your hard work.
It hasn't necessarily been fully implemented for me yet, so we'll see.
She does get to take some vacation time in February and then she gets to come back and work on this.
Back to it.
And I do want to encourage you to feel, you know, comfortable in screaming for help when it, if it proves to be more overwhelming than anticipated. Since we don't actually know yet what they're actually going to put on you.
Exactly, I really don't. So right now I'm smiling, but we'll see.
Yeah. Let us know when we need to bring chocolate.
I always have some in my office. I'm well stocked.
All right.
Any other questions?
Are there other questions from members of the board? I think that was helpful. That did put a little more of a sense of where we're going on to this as much as we can with the state not having yet told us where we're going.
From what we do know.
Exact template.
Why are we not surprised?
I did notice a certain element of cynicism from our cabinet here about the full funding by 2021, too. Just making a note there.
Yes.
Our lifetime, huh? We'll all be retired by then.
None, really.
Yes, I hope so. Okay, that brings us somewhere down here to Section 3, Business of Financial Procedures, Item 6, our Annual Financial Audit Report.
I'll speak to this. As you know, each year we have to have an independent auditor come and audit our financial records for the close of the year. And that's for the 1213 year, which you approved the unaudited actuals in September. So tonight we have our audit partner from VTG, Vevernick, Triad Day and Company, Ahmad Garabi, I believe. And not only do we have our regular audit of our financials, but we also have our first year Measure I Annual Financial Audit Report and/or Annual Financial Report, as well as compliance report. And he'll speak to those as well. So Mr. Garabi?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. This is the Annual Financial Report of the District. District is a local government required by the ed code and government auditing standards to undergo an annual financial statement audit. And it requires an auditor to issue an opinion on the fair presentation of the financial statements, along with other opinions that, because you're a local government, state compliance, federal compliance, as well as internal control evaluation, if you may. The scope of the audit involves ensuring that the financial statements are fairly stated. We obtain the financial information from the district, which is typically presented to you sometime in August in the form of an unaudited actuals. And what we do is we confirm these balances. We confirm them with external sources. We confirm them with the county. We confirm your cash with the county. Your receivables, we confirm that with the state or federal agencies. Your payables, your payroll, your expenses, your revenues. We redo revenue limit calculation for the district just to make sure that the calculation is proper. And in all material respect, we evaluate the fair presentation of these financial statements. And our job is to issue an opinion on these financial statements. And I'm pleased to let you know that the opinion was a clean opinion. It's called unmodified under our audit standards, which means that the financial statements are fairly stated. Over and above, the district is a government and it is required by government auditing standards to undergo a compliance audit. And it requires us to report to you whether we noted any deficiencies in internal control, significant or material. We take a look at the internal control. We like to see segregations of functions and duties. We like to see the assets separate from the record. We take a look at the manner that you process disbursements, the manner that you process your receipts, cafeteria receipts, childcare program. We take a look at the manner that you process payroll. We like to see segregation of functions and duties, just to make sure that the assets are safeguarded. And we are required to report to you whether we noted any deficiencies in the internal control or any material weaknesses in the internal control. And I'm also pleased to let you know that we noted no deficiencies, excuse me, or material weaknesses in the internal controls over disbursements, payroll, or any other manner in the district. Again, the state also requires you to undergo an audit, which requires testing certain programs, mainly it revolves around attendance. We go out to the sites, along with visiting the sites. We take a look at the student body accounts. We take a look at the controls over there as well. We take a look at attendance, class size reduction, specific state programs. And we had no exceptions. So it's a clean opinion with respect to the state compliance. Federal compliance, again, you're a recipient of federal grants. The federal grants has specific requirements, very strict requirements, a little bit different than state requirements in terms of the internal controls and in terms of separate accounting for federal funds to ensure that the federal funds are spent on the purpose for which they were specified for. And again, we issued a clean opinion. We noted no exception with federal compliance. Just a quick overview of the financial statements. The first opinion, which is the fair presentation of the financial statements, you'll see that at the very first page of the audit report. Then you'll see a management discussion and analysis, which basically describes significant changes between this year and the prior year in the financial statements. An interesting overview of the financial statements is on page 15. That's a consolidated presentation of the financial statements for the district. A little bit different than the unaudited actuals. It has capital assets and it has long-term debt. And it has, at the end of the day, the equity subdivided into invested equity that is invested in capital assets, unrestricted equity and restricted equity. The district does have about $70 million worth of capital assets. You'll see that towards the very first section of the balance sheet. It's called Statement of Net Position. And you do have almost an equivalent amount of long-term debt, which mainly is general obligation bonds alongside with other assets, mainly because it's a government, mainly it's cash and investments, deposits and investments and receivables. The individual fund financial statements, which is what we, which is what was presented to you in the, in the form of unaudited actuals, you see that on page 17. It's a fund-by-fund level type of presentation. One is a balance sheet. The other one is an income statement. They call it Statement of Revenues, Expenditures and Changes in Fund Balance. And then notes to the financial statements describing in detail the different line items within these balance sheets starts on page 24. Again, one interesting presentation would be the note to the financial statements related to long-term debt and capital assets. You see the long-term debt on page with all details of all the outstanding bonds, including the new bond on page 41. And then capital assets is noted on page 39. District this year issued a couple of bonds. One of them is a refunding bond. And the other one is a current issuance. It's for the Measure I, is what the other bond is. The refunding was issued to sustain lower interest rates and have some savings in terms of the annual payments on the bonds. The other one was issued to fund capital projects in accordance with Measure I, which I will go through in a second over here. Governments have, they adhere to a specific standard called Government Accounting Standards Board. They issue what they call GASB statements. One thing major to note is that in 2015, there's a new pronouncement that is coming out that would require governments to recognize certain liabilities that were not on the financial statements. It's going to be in a couple of years. That liability is for pensions. And I know that a pension liability may not exist for a school district because all school districts pull their pension liabilities with calpers and calsters in Sacramento. But there is a liability over there. It's pulled. And one way or another, calpers and calsters will have to calculate that number and distribute it amongst all school districts. So that's a major change that will be upcoming within a couple of years. And with that, I'd be more than happy to take any questions with respect to the district audit. And in a little bit, I'm going to go through the bond audit that we performed. But if there are any questions with respect to the district audit, I'll be more than happy to answer.
I'm just happy that there was no issues this time because I know when you came before, there was that one segregation of duties. So that's been totally taken care of.
That's correct. We cleared all prior year findings. We had some comments, I believe, last year maybe, or the year before. And we followed up on it. District followed up on it, actually. We just confirmed that they did indeed follow up on it and we cleared those findings away from the audit report.
That's great.
Sounds good.
Just to follow up, so just to clarify, you were saying that the, our pension liabilities are going to be factored in starting next year?
Right. It's a reporting requirement. It's a 2015, June 30, 2015. So it's a reporting requirement. It's not a funding requirement.
Understood. No, no, I actually, I like the idea of us understanding that not all these off-balance-sheet items such as pension liabilities will be factored into how much we're generating or how much we're getting from the government. And just out of curiosity to our CBO, is there a general idea of how big our unfunded or our pension liabilities are right now? Just out of, just wondering.
No, I have no idea, but I would imagine quite large.
And then, and the reason I'm thinking of that is that because the unfunded liabilities were a off-balance-sheet item and they weren't really on our, on our balance sheet, now that they are going to be, whatever extra revenue or savings that we have out there will be offset. And basically, I just want that to go out to the, to the millions of viewing audience out there and to the people in, in the room, that there is a, there is a cost to, to our future liabilities and we must recognize them just as a family recognizes a mortgage debt or a school debt or anything like that. And we must be cognizant on, on spending and pricing pressures and things of that sort. And that's.
Of course, this is a debt that we hope the state will, or the purrs and stirs will be able to cover and that it will never come to our coffers or have to go out of our coffers, should I say.
Measure I.
Turn around to Measure I. Appears there are no further questions.
Considering that we haven't really, we did a thumb sketch quickly. Haven't had a chance to read it all, but if there's any questions.
Did I read it all this afternoon?
Well, I was not home. I usually like to get something a little sooner than today. I mean, the outcome looks good, but I'll probably do some reading. So I'll let Julie know if I see something that looks, and she'll, I'm sure, explain it to me.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I know you.
That you bring later.
Yeah. We won't take time here.
Great. A specific audit, a little bit different than the district, but also at the same time, very similar. It's good that we're doing both at the same time. It's concurrent. It serves dual testing. It actually saves you guys some money. The bond audit is required by Proposition 39. You are required to have two elements whenever you pass that bond. One is to have an oversight committee. The other one is to have an independent audit. And the audit is divided into two sections. The first is a financial audit and the second one is a performance audit. That's under Proposition 39. It's actually a Senate bill that was, that modified slightly a couple of years ago. The financial audit is basically to ensure that the money is separately accounted for and is safeguarded and is spent on bond-related projects. So mainly it, it's a balance sheet of the building fund, where the district maintains the funds from the proceeds of the bonds. We go out, we confirm the proceeds with official statements with the bank. We make sure that the proceeds were properly deposited in a separate bond fund. We confirm the cash with the county, make sure that the cash is in there, payables. We confirm it with the vendors. We take a look at the invoices, revenues. If they were interest-related, we confirm that they were properly calculated. So essentially, what the purpose of the audit is to make sure that bond money is segregated away from district funds. And we opine, similar to the district, on the fair presentation of the financial statements related to the bonds. And you see those financial statements. One is what we call a balance sheet, which is what's, what's left over. And the other one is a change in the balance sheet, which is the income statement or Statement of Revenues, Expenditures and Changes in Fund Balance. You see those on page three and four. You'll see your new bond coming in, seventeen and a half million dollars coming in on page four. That's the revenue. And then some expenses were incurred. And what's left over between the revenues and the expenses, the leftovers are what we call a balance sheet, which is presented on page three. And page three shows that there is $16.8 million worth of cash left in the bond fund, which is because of the bond was, I believe, issued towards the end of the year or there were no major expenditures paid out of that bond fund. Yeah. Next year, there will be quite a bit. So this is a balance sheet. This is a financial audit. It's fairly simple and easy. I mean, all we have to do is just confirm these numbers with the county, confirm the revenues with, which is the proceeds from the bonds with the bank official statement and the bank, and then confirm that these expenses are indeed bond-related expenses. Later on, you see the notes to the bond financial statements, which basically details out what I just explained. And then the unique requirement for Proposition 39, a little bit different than district audit, is to ensure that the expenses are in accordance with the ballot language. They are in compliance with the ballot language. So what we do is we obtain a general ledger of all the expenses that were charged to the bond fund. And we sample, and we sample quite a bit, actually. Thought that this, yeah. So we got 69% worth of testing, just because the way that the construction invoices, they're rather large. Now, needless to say, we put an emphasis on large and small items. It's not just large items that we put an emphasis on. We get a representative sample of the total population. We take a look at these invoices. We sit with somebody with it in the district who's familiar with these construction contracts. We read these, these invoices, we read those contracts, and we go back to the ballot language and we make sure that these expenses are in compliance with what the voters had voted on. And we issue an opinion on the performance. Do they call it a performance audit? The manner that a government auditing standards defines it. But basically, it's a compliance audit. That's what it stands for. And it's a clean opinion. We had no exceptions into the invoices, into the revenues, into the expenses. They're all properly accounted for. And with that, I'll be more than happy to take any questions with respect to the bond audits.
But I'm, I'm just very happy to hear that everything is in compliance and we've done well. Thank you, guys.
Just a technical question on the segregation of the actual funds. So what do you actually verify that? We just have a separate line item for that or it's a different bank or the bank has a different?
Yes. Actually, it's a, we, there's two sets. One set is internal, which is what we call general ledger. And the other set is external, which mainly is the bank account. And we reconcile the two with each other. The district did segregate the bond proceeds and the bond expenses and everything related to Measure I into a separate coding on the general ledger. And then at the same time, they segregated the cash into a separate account with the county controller. So that's what we make sure. And those two are completely independent and separated. Not, I shouldn't use independent, but separate from general fund or whatever other funds that the district has. They're completely separate. And then whatever goes in and goes out, out of that separate GL account or out of that separate bank account is confirmed to external sources. That's what we do.
All right.
I know the oversight committee is supposed to look and see how we're spending our money and if it's in compliance. So do they have access to all this stuff?
They do. We had a meeting recently and they looked at all of the expenses that we had spent through November 30th. And at the next meeting, which is in February, Mr. Garabi will be presenting the financials to them.
Okay. I missed that meeting. It was intense.
Yeah.
And they have that.
And I don't know if this, if this makes any sense, but does, what we're doing with the solar and how, you know, the returns that we're getting from that, does that play into this at all?
Yes. I don't know if this is a 2014 transaction or 2013 transaction. I can't recall.
It will be part of our assets when, when they're put into place and going. So that means it's going to be in the 13-14 year, where they'll become part of our, the district assets. As for the savings that we generate in PG&E, that will end up being a general fund savings.
That's money that's not spent as opposed to money that's.
Starting when?
When it, that switch is flipped.
All right, so.
PG&E bill comes in at a lower price.
So, um, we haven't flipped the switch. When, when, when are we going to?
Well, we haven't ceremoniously flipped the switch, but we have functionally flipped the switch. We are generating our own electricities and that should start showing up probably in our January bills.
All right, so soon.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Just out of curiosity, how do we benchmark the savings between the paid solar cost and what the non, and the, I guess, the regular paid cost is? And then how do we trans, how do we benchmark the, the high-water mark and the, and the solar cost?
So that would be compared to prior year.
Okay, okay. Um, and I do have a question. Um, the bond issuance that we just did, is the debt service coming in this year? Or, or did it come in last year? Or it comes in, in, in twelve months? Because we issued it in the second half.
Debt service was included on the financial report, yes.
Right. That, I believe the new bond is located on page forty-four. And you'll see the debt service just for that particular bond at the bottom of that page.
And the, and we paid that?
Uh, it gets, it gets paid over thirty years.
By the, by the property taxpayers, provided it doesn't become a ghost town.
I can't do it.
So the debts are just, sorry about that. So the debt service is paid off, so the debt service cost of these bonds that we issued are, is not going to come out of our general fund?
Correct. The money actually never even comes into us. The, um, county treasurer collects it or the, the tax pay, tax, county tax collector collects it and it gets paid directly that way. But the information is sent to us and they go into these financial statements. They don't actually go into our accounts.
And for the non, the non-allocated funds that we have that are domiciled in the.
At the bank.
In the county coffers, do we get that interest or they get to keep that interest?
Um, we have a, a certain period of time that we have to complete the projects.
But I'm wondering, you know how if money stays in the bank, it collects interest? Do we get that or they get that?
Only if it's, we have a period of time in which we have to spend it and if we make funds beyond that, then there's the arbitrage issue. And I'll let Ahmad, Mr. Garabi, explain that to you a little bit more. It's where we, we're not, we're not supposed to make more money than, um, go ahead and explain.
From an IRS perspective, they just don't want local governments earning, uh, interest on tax-exempt bonds. Tax-exempt bonds carry lower interest rates, but when you put it in a separate bank account, you might, it doesn't happen that often, but you might earn a higher interest. So if there's a difference between the two and they want you to do it over a five-year period, wait five years and then calculate it, then you'll have to pay it. Looking at the interest rates, historical interest rates, they've been going down. We haven't seen one local government paying arbitrage in the past five years. It might happen, but it, it's not quite often. But to answer your question, interest earnings on the cash proceeds from the bonds, does the district earn it? Yes. Does it get spent on bond-related projects? Yes. They have to be spent on bond-related projects.
Okay, and the, the reason I'm, I, I ask this because since it sits in the county coffers, do they get to keep the interest or it comes back to us?
It's separately accounted for. All your cash actually is with the county, whether general fund or building fund. It is with the county. But they have separate accounts on their general ledger that tracks each individual fund of the district. The building fund is district fund and it earns interest and yes, it will be spent, or we will audit the fact that it was spent on capital.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions? If there are no further questions, I want to thank you very much for this report. Um, I can't help looking at all of that and thinking better you than me. But nice to have people like you who can do that for us and do it in a thorough manner.
Thank you.
We have no further questions. We need to accept this report. We have a motion to accept the report.
Motion to accept.
Seven.
Aye.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the opposition. Okay, item seven. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank, um, Mr. Garabi. I've worked with him for many years and I have a lot of confidence in him and his staff and also in their ability to guide us throughout the year when we have questions that we're not certain how to handle things. Thank you.
That's good to know. Yes, thank you. Okay, this brings us to item seven.
They're on her speed dial.
They're on speed dial?
Mm-hmm.
Oh. I, I have it on my phone. Oh, I see. They're on the speed dial. Okay. Sorry, process, the central processing unit is getting slowed down here. So, we have item seven, approval of two thousand twelve, thirteen developer fee compliance pursuant to government code six, six, zero, zero, one.
I can speak to this. On a yearly basis, uh, we collect developer fees and, um, we use developer fees for, um, purposes that increased enrollment would cause for us to have to add more facilities or replace facilities because of the wearing down. And, um, also, we have to spend these funds within a five-year period. If we don't, then that means we really didn't need the permits. When, when people want to build their home, do it in addition, they have to pay fees for their permits and that, a lot of that comes to school districts. So, um, if we're, if we don't have the need for it, the five-year period, then that basically means we charge them for, um, a fee for something that we shouldn't have. So we have five years to spend it and we're doing a fine job of doing that. Um, we had, we began the year, and this is for the twelve, thirteen year, with a balance of three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars of developer fees. We received a hundred and thirty-seven thousand additional fees and another three thousand in interest. And we spent four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So we did a good job. Um, we have an end balance of fifty-nine thousand dollars. So we've got five years to spend it, but we will be receiving more funds this year and, and every future year until people stop pulling permits. Um, the majority of the funds were spent on the, um, finishing up of the central kitchen last year. And, uh, a few of the funds, a, a little bit of it was spent on the furnishings that we need. There is no need to refund any, um, permit fees that have been charged in the last, oh, five years ago.
Well done. Okay, is there any question or discussion? Okay, could we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the two thousand twelve, uh, two thousand thirteen developer fee compliance pursuant to government code six, six, zero, zero, one.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Thank you.
Thank you. This brings us to section four, certificated personnel. Item one, increase in substitute teacher salary.
So there's actually sort of three items similar in the sense of, um, what we'd like to do. That would be that item, the substitute teacher salary increase, and the next one about retired teacher salary and then under classified personnel increase in classified substitute salary. So we really need to attract and retain effective subs. We do a lot of professional development in the common core and we just, you know, hopefully, when we have these professional develops, we have enough subs and that we have competent people out there while our teachers are attending these. So, um, since the employees in the district received a six percent raise, uh, the administration felt it would be good to give a six percent raise to the substitute teachers. And what we'd like to do is align it with the salary schedule so that as, hopefully in the future, as increases come in, it sort of would become automatic with the substitutes. We get that by aligning it with a step and column, uh, situation on the regular salary schedule. Um, so what we're recommending for substitute teachers is that, um, the board approve an increase for the, we have the two subs. The day-to-day substitute teacher is currently getting a hundred and thirty dollars a day. And if we aligned it to step one, column one, the teacher salary, it's equivalent to fifty-five percent of what those teachers would get. And that would increase their pay from a hundred and thirty day to a hundred and thirty-eight dollars a day. And we'd like to start this February first of this year. And then we've got long-term subs that currently make a hundred and sixty a day and we'd like to increase that to a hundred and seventy a day. And that would be placing them to earn sixty percent, sick, I'm sorry, sixty-eight percent of the step one, column one of the regular teacher's salary.
And, and the, and you mentioned about the classified, but.
Well, that's another item, but it's similar situation.
It's the same thing. Okay, when you said it, you said it was included in here. I just couldn't find it. I know it's somewhere else.
Come soon.
No, I know, but you pre, you said it's all here. I'm going, where?
Well, I was happy when I saw this in the bulletin that this is going to be done. Thinking as a current substitute teacher in another district that was mentioned several times tonight. But no, I think it's important and that, that is one of the main reasons why I do substitute teachers, because I know that the teachers need a lot of professional development and they appreciate when someone can come into the room and all chaos does not break out. So, anyway, I'm happy to see this on here. So do we need a motion now or?
Unless there's further discussion, we can take a motion.
I like to make a motion to approve teacher's salary, uh, a raise in substitute teacher's salary, uh, to one hundred and thirty-eight dollars a day effective February first, two thousand and fourteen.
And the other one?
And?
And long-term.
The, is that the retiree?
The, the long-term.
Oh, no, oh, sorry. And the long-term subs from one sixty a day to one seventy a day, February first, two thousand and fourteen.
And?
That's it for that.
And so, the, the one question I wanted to ask is, how do you define long-term sub?
It's someone who, well, they work a long period of time, two, starting at probably three weeks and then on. So we have people on maternity leave and long-term sub comes in. So they're actually responsible for doing planning and a lot more.
So it's, it's really, in a way, a different phase. I mean, it's more responsibility.
And in order to, um, to have someone who's working more than thirty days, let's say in a classroom, they have to have a regular full credential versus just a substitute.
So, um, you say it's, you think it's about three weeks or is it?
Well, sometimes it varies. If you're starting the school year off, maybe it ends up only being two weeks, but there's a big burden to start the school year off.
Yeah, okay.
So that is something that is somewhat flexible when it's decreed that somebody is a long-term substitute.
Right.
And they sign a contract as being a long-term substitute.
Yeah, okay. Just wanted to know how.
Then do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition. Okay, item two, the increase in the retiree teacher's salary.
Yeah, we're fortunate that retirees will come back and they do a lot of the, like, the self-testing for us and, you know, help out in ways as, things they kind of used to do as a regular classroom teacher. So their, their pay has been higher and we'd like to increase it from two hundred and fifty a day to two hundred and seventy-two dollars a day, which is about a six percent increase. And we tie that into, because it's a higher rate of pay, step three, column two, on the regular teacher's salary schedule. And also February first would be the timing for this.
This is just teachers only, not, uh, not principals, right?
Right, this is just retiree teacher.
When a retiree teacher comes back and works for us on a short-term basis.
Right.
But do they ever work on a, a long period of time or is it?
Uh, some people do, um, if they're helping with like a reading program, um, at a particular site. Most of our retirees are doing some of their shorter period of time.
Is there a limit on how much a retiree can?
Yes, there's a limit, there's a limit on the pay. It's around thirty-nine thousand dollars a year, so that limits how long a person can work for us.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, we have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the increase in retired teacher salaries.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the opposition. Okay, and over here in section five, classified, item three, the increase in classified substitute salary.
So the, the last time there was an increase was, uh, October two thousand and seven. So again, you know, something I feel is, we feel is due. It would be a six percent increase and that comes out to being, and it sounds kind of funny, but, you know, if you looked at step one, it's two percent less than step one of a regular employee.
Really reflect? Hate to see a minus two percent.
I know. It, uh, but if we put them on the regular salary, then they'd be making the same as one of our, sort of, regular employees, which doesn't quite seem right either.
Can't do that, yeah.
So it, it has them earning a little less, but it still gives them that six percent increase. So, uh, if somebody made, uh, fifteen dollars an hour, you know, so you're talking thirty cents an hour difference.
So you can't put a specific dollar amount on this one because depending on what job they're doing.
Right, which class is different pay.
Well, that's why if you just said step one, it wouldn't matter. It would be, so what's the sense of thirty cents? It just seems so.
Well, it's a lesser rate than our regular employees make.
Because they're not doing the same job as a regular.
Um, I would mention to say some probably are definitely doing more. Doing at least, you know. I mean, it just seems funny to say less than when, I know it's peanuts. Okay, the, if you say that without saying the minus two percent, but this sounds so like, what? So it's, it's not really.
If we say it's six percent.
It's a six percent increase, but then you're, you're, are you subtracting two percent? Wait, I, wait, I did finish my question. If you say six percent increase and then you say minus two percent, is that two percent coming out of the six percent?
No, it's coming, it's aligning it to the salary schedule where that is two percent less than the first step on the salary schedule.
And before, they were getting the first step?
No.
They never got the first step?
Right. Well, they did, it may have been in two thousand and seven that it was at. No, it wasn't. It was before that. It was less. It was two percent less at that time. It wasn't the same amount as the first step.
They ought to go work, be, so to another district.
Huh?
A lot of the districts give them the first step on whatever job you're working. Okay, that's all right. Oh, I mean, we're talking about such a little amount of money.
Yeah.
A little bit amount of money. Okay. It's not like it's a big thing, but it sounds awful.
Correct me if I'm wrong, it is an increase in salary, right?
It's a six, it's a six percent increase.
Just making sure I understand that.
Yeah, but you're not getting what, fulfilling a job that you're not getting paid.
Well, it's actually, it's the same as our substitute teachers. They don't get the same rate of pay. It's quite a bit less than our regular employees make. And so this is making it a little less than our regular employees would make, yet it's still a six percent increase from what they're currently would be making as a substitute.
Yeah, it makes sense.
That makes sense, I hope.
Well, you kind of went around, but I think it came out right.
It makes sense. It makes sense, but if you just take out the minus two percent, you'll feel a lot better.
Thank you very much.
I think the point, if I, if I understand correctly, the point in all of these.
Increase, six percent, period.
I believe the point of this in each of these has been to create an ongoing, so we don't have to go in and specifically change it every time there's a change in the salary schedule.
Because we, by, by approving these, we are in fact linking these substitute pays to the salary schedule.
Right.
Yes.
And they'll stay linked.
Except classified is not really on the salary schedule.
Their salary is linked to it. It is determined by what the salary schedule is.
Yeah, minus two percent.
Well, they're all minus something, they're all something, but they're related to that so that it will adjust as the salary schedule adjusts, which seems like a nice.
As Shaquille said, a six percent increase would have been fine without all the.
But then we have to do it again the next time.
No, I mean, without saying all that.
We can have an external and an internal document.
Could I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve, um, where's that? Employment, classified personnel.
We have a motion to improve the increase in classified substitute salary. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposition. Okay. Brings us down here. We're coming down to the end. Are you up for the, the quick ten-minute version?
Yeah, I think it's.
We have report from board members on professional development.
Yeah, we do, we do need about twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes for a closed session item. So.
Yeah, this would be less than ten minutes.
Can you make it five or do you want us to table?
Yeah, it can be five or less.
Okay. All right, so for summary.
I'm gonna have to try to use two devices at the same time. So, five-minute version. We all attended the CSBA's two thousand and thirteen annual education conference and trade show. This is the CSBA's premier professional development and continuing education event and one of the best learning opportunities.